Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, January 12th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could all take a moment of silence to reflect on our duties as servants of the town, and also to pray for the safety and safe return of our soldiers both overseas and in the United States. Thank you. I mean, according to Mass Mutual, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Islam Meadow Cable Access and also by the Selectments Office, and I have to ask if anyone else in the audience is recording it.
Chris Kedron.
Thanks, Chris. All right. We're starting the evening off with our public forum, and the only person who's signed up for it is Mr. Turner. Come on up, Mr. Turner. I don't even know if we can reach with this table.
Okay. You gave me this at the last meeting.
Yep.
And I wanted to see Mr. Halyer, and he's been out for four weeks, and he's still going to be out for a while. So I did get down there a couple of times in the office, but it was either closed or I was told that he's going to be out for at least another couple of weeks. Okay, I'm gonna just make a couple of brief comments and take it from there, okay? I couldn't get any information, so I didn't take any of these further. But let me get to the thing. I passed in these four complaints in September. I received a reply back from him in December. By statute, he's supposed to get back to me within two weeks, and he didn't. And if I go and I, you know, go through the process, which I've been through, and I know that I'm held to a strict standard, and I just would like it if we were all held to the same standard. Because if he's got three months, and I've got 30 days, but by job description, it says that he has to be back to me within 14 days.
Okay.
So where's the fairness?
Well, we will take down our advisement, but that's that we're going over the same topics that we've gone over before. You got, you brought those complaints in, I believe, every one of your, if you could let me speak, please.
Yes.
Every one of your complaints has been handled in one form or another, so you know the process from here is to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I've got-
We went through this last meeting when you got the results of those, so I, as much as I know your concern, and we've had, we have had some issues, and we're trying to deal with them, but, but to come here month after month and say the same thing over and over again, when you've gotten the answers to your complaints eventually-
No, I haven't.
Yes, you did. The last, when you were here the last time, you got the, you got the results of your last four complaints.
I've probably got-
You got results.
Eight complaints out there that he's never, ever answered.
Well, what I understand, he's responded to every complaint that you've given him.
No, he hasn't.
Well, we have a disagreement then, because I, that's what I, that's what I know from other people, so. In any event, your next, and you haven't given us any complaints that he hasn't answered. You gave us four last time, and we gave you the results of those at the, when you were sitting here.
At the end of the year, three out of the four of these complaints were sent letters to the CIS.
This is 2016, I mean, 2015.
This is 2013.
Okay.
And, and the answer we get here now, three years later, is these concerns will be addressed, okay? He's had almost three years to address these concerns, and now that, that's an answer.
That's from the, that's from the taxpayer.
Mm-hmm.
So it's up to the taxpayer to address the, the issues. And once again, that's, that's the response that he's been, you've been given by him, so the process is if you don't like the response, then you have to take it one step further to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. So in other words, what you're telling me is I can, I can resubmit any of these anytime, because he didn't, he didn't follow the-
Well, if you've already gotten an answer, if you, if you've already gotten an answer on it-
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need 30 days to, to file. That's about it.
Okay.
So I have to go through the process again.
And then I would assume that you'll get the same answer you got there, so you'll just be churning paperwork for no reason.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
I'm glad, I'm glad you feel that way.
Because, you know, when, when Mr. Gorman goes out and he examines property, and I say something is there at night, you go out at 11 o'clock in the morning, you're not going to find anything. That's kind of a, that's kind of a very shoddy answer to give someone. If you, if you go out at 11 o'clock in the morning, I say it's there every evening, every night, and weekends.
About one-
So you go out on a Wednesday afternoon at 11 o'clock and say, "We didn't find anything." What do you expect to find? And I expect that I can, I'll bring in a pile of them, a pile, six or eight, that he never, ever answered.
Well, that's, once again, that's, you're saying that-
If he moves for you, and I can show you copies-
I'm glad I can finish the sentence here, but as far as I know, they've been answered. So we know, you know the process is to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. If, from now on, I mean, if I have to, I appreciate the fact that you're a taxpayer, and this is your time to talk, but if you're going to come and talk about the same thing every time, we're going to ask you to submit what you're speaking of in advance, so we can see if it's actually something that's a rehash of something else, or some, a new complaint. That's all I can say.
Okay. That's an, and I can say that, that the job's not being done. There have been fines issued, they have never been issued to the people. They've got tickets, those tickets have never been passed to the collector, and it's all here, all of my answers, and then I look for resolution, and there is no resolution.
Okay.
And I'm told I can't come and keep saying the same thing. Well, if it's the same thing, and we've got laws in place, they should be enforced, and you all took an autophus to enforce the laws, and it's not being done. And this, it's in many different places. I just picked this one because it's easy to show. You can take pictures. I can bring pictures, and I've brought in pictures before.
Mm-hmm.
And you looked at them, and said, "Oh, yeah, well, gee."
The eight-
That means nothing, you throw it back at me. Thank you. Good night.
All right. Our next, actually, our 6:15 appointment isn't here yet, because we're a little early, so why don't we go through the approval of the, I'd like to make a motion to approve the open session minutes of March 9th and 10th. March 9th and 10th, 2015? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have, our next item is the update. I assume this is supposed to be you, Greg, since it's the update from the interim town manager?
Oh, yeah, sure. Hi. Well, Selectman Gorman and I have been looking at the building department, with the building inspector being gone, for it looks like maybe about three more weeks, so I've been looking at the building permits and processing them, and, and doing some of the inspections, so we're moving those things along as a licensed architect.
Yeah, I was gonna say, please tell your, your credentials, so that they know that you, we're just not having a town administrator go out there.
Yeah, so, but most of them are fairly straightforward, replacement of windows, insulation in attics, things like that, but, so those are being moved along. We met with the Scantic Valley this morning, and of course, they discussed many of the Health Trust issues, and that all looks like it's working along just fine. And I think, you know, in general, oh, yeah, and then the Health Department are moving along with that. We've written up a description of that, what that position would be like, and then we're going to write up what the department would look like as far as a Human Resource Director, Assistant, and the Benefits Coordinator all working together in a Human Resource Department, so moving that along.
Very good. And I think with the Health Department, we're going to go over a little bit in detail now, as we, when we get to the health portion of the-
Yes.
Agenda. The next item is the, let's see, we got the Police Department budget, which was the only budget that was not passed last time. Discussion and vote. Is there any discussion from the board?
Do you have a recommendation?
Right.
Greg, I thought Greg, Greg may have a recommendation for us to consider. Or does Billy have something he wants to say?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to cut the budget to $150,000, with $50,000 given to the appropriation, in case we can't come up with something to regulate the overtime that's going on. We got to bring it under some justification on why there's so much overtime.
So move for discussion. I mean, second, he moved it, I second it.
No, nobody moved it, because he's, he's, well, he made the motion.
Okay, so I'll move it then.
There a second?
You can second out a necessity.
I'll second out a necessity, yeah.
Discussion. The $50,000, right?
Yep.
That's going to be held where?
That'll be appropriation.
In the reserve fund.
In a reserve, their reserve fund, though, right?
Right.
The police reserve.
No, the, I believe it'd be the, the Reserve Fund of the appropriations, which normally, when any board goes over a line item in the budget, they would then apply to the appropriations, have to transfer from the reserve fund.
Is there a chance that it could be used for something else?
Yes.
What about having, I'm sorry, Paul, that-
No, it's okay.
What about having, um, is our council coming in?
I thought he was going to be here tonight, yes.
Okay. You know how we have a revolving fund? Is it possible that they could have that in a revolving fund? Because I just concern, I'm concerned that if it goes into the, you know, the melting pot, it just may disappear, and I do agree with trying to get it under control, however, I think once you give that over-
From talking with Sarah, our town accountant, she was saying that in the past, the reserve fund was $250,000, but last year's budget, they reduced it to $200,000. So I think Selectman Gorman's proposal is to increase it again to $250,000 as a buffer in case-
In case we need it.
-that was needed for the police.
So my question is, if for the last 10 years, it's been in, in the vicinity of $300,000, the overtime, and we're cutting it by, in this case, $170,000, and obviously, my concern is for public safety, if the $50,000 isn't enough, where does the rest of the money come from? Since everyone's got this figured out.
But over the last few years, it hasn't been under control, Paul. Nobody looked into it, they just pass everything. That's why it's come to our head right now.
But it's been the same, like I said, it's been the same amount for 10 years, at least, if not longer.
That don't make it right, though.
It doesn't make it right, but it's, it's-
Well, that's why we're trying to address it right now.
Have they turned any money back into the, at the end of the year from the budget?
I don't know.
No, because they've used it. So all I'm saying is, I'm considering public safety first. I mean, there's ways of doing this, but to just go ahead and cut the thing without, I mean, you look at one town and said, "Oh, Greenfield does this, this, this," you look at four or five towns, you can look at Long Meadow, you can look at other towns and get a comparison and do it in a more orderly fashion, but that's, you know, that's just my opinion, so.
Let me ask you a question. Have you looked into the other towns?
No, I haven't, because we-
Well, you're, you're, well, wait a minute. You're saying that, but you haven't looked into anything. But you're throwing all these towns out here.
No.
So don't throw the towns out if you haven't looked into it.
I have, because I've talked to other officers.
I've looked, I've looked into some towns.
Okay.
And our budget is sky-high compared to some towns.
But not to others.
With the, it's the same amount of people, the same amount of police officers.
Okay. And have you looked into the ages of the police officers, to see if, if you have younger, you know, turnover, and you got more people going to the academy, and that may cause more overtime?
Yes, and, yeah, and a lot of these towns got senior officers compared to, we got a lot of younger officers.
Right. Which adds to the, which adds to the overtime. So, okay.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose?
Aye.
Motion passed.
But please pass that past council, to see if that's enough, if there's another way we can put that in a revolving account. And this is just the budget that's being presented to appropriations.
Next item is the old fire station.
Two fifty.
There's surplus property there?
So Attorney Donahue recommended that we declare it as surplus property, and my looking into Chapter 30B was for the disposition of property that we need to, we need to, if we're going to lease, if we're going to rent it or lease it out, we need to find out whether or not there's other people who may want to do that.
What kind of property is it, just out of curiosity? Do you know?
Yeah, I went into it today. It's the old fire station, it looks like it was a two-bay fire station.
Right.
It's pretty small, it's probably about the size of this room.
Oh, right, but I was just wondering what the surplus property was.
Oh, so ask your question again, then?
No, I was just wondering, you were saying there's surplus property there.
Oh, so it has to be, legally, it has to be declared as surplus property.
Oh, the burden is, okay, sorry.
So the town doesn't need it. So here's the process I was thinking of doing, is sending out a memo to all the departments, asking them whether or not this piece of property would be needed by those particular departments. And since it's been discussed, I think, for a while, and it probably, the other departments are aware of it, I imagine that'll come back, that they do not need it. And then what we'll do is, we will advertise that the property is available. We don't have to award it by price, we can also award it by need also, so, and then that, I think that would fulfill Chapter 30B, and then we'd be able to sign the lease legally with, with that particular entity.
Okay.
So that's the process we're going to be doing.
All right, and as far as the lease, we do have a lease agreement there.
Right, so we have a sample lease agreement that, that was provided to us by the JACs. The building does need some repair to it also.
Which they're supposedly willing to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Very good. So as far as the lease goes, we just, that's been vetted by, I believe, our town attorney and everything, so it's just a matter of-
Right. Advertising it, basically.
Okay.
And not the lease, but advertising the property, and if no one comes back, or if there's other people, then we would evaluate those and choose the one.
Okay.
And again, it doesn't have to be on price either.
All right. Thank you. Our next item is the Republican, Republic Funds Scholarships for this coming year, which I guess it is this coming year.
Yeah, it is this year. This is just a timeline for us, for you to look at. Hopefully, you'll accept it, so we can get moving on it. The last, over the last two years, we've given four or four to five scholarships, ranging from $500 to $1,000, with three to four runner-ups from the price range, excuse me, the scholarships being from $100 to $250. It's up to you, all of us, to what we want to give. I, I know that, you know, you might want to use the funds in a different way, but this is just a recommendation that I had put forward, so that we could make a decision, so we could get moving with it, and I'll get the information over to the Islam Meadow Career Center, so that they could, the candidates could get whatever form, either a commercial we've done in the past, or we have had just a selection process. But either way, this, this timeline, with the deadline being the last day in February at 4:00 PM, along with the W9s, and then having the selection process the second week of March, and then the checks would be ready for the award ceremony that happens in May, May or April.
Sounds fine. Any other, any other comments from the board?
What, what amount would you like to give?
So we've got $1,500 to, um-
Oh, well, you have $7,000 that's been given to us, but I don't think you want to put it all in one spot.
No.
But that's up to you.
Well, it's up to the board.
Yeah, well, I meant yous.
I would like, I mean, if you get $1,500, I would like to boost it up a little bit.
Okay. So what, first place?
I mean, maybe $1,000 for first place.
Okay, that's what we did in the past, okay.
And if we did, how about if we did $1,000 first place and four, $500s, and that would do 300, I mean, 3,000, and then we'd still have $4,000 left for other things.
So four, $500s?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, college is so expensive, but-
It is. It really is. Okay.
Anything to benefit, but if you could give a little bit more.
I think that's, Billy?
So what do you, what do you say, Paul, $1,000 for first place?
He's proposing.
First place, $1,000, and then four, $500, so we'd be giving away $3,000 instead of $1,500.
Yeah, that, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. And then, so we can do it all in one, with doing the commercial, a short commercial, no more than five minutes, to be submitted, no later than February, February 28th or 29th, the last day in February. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Yep.
The W9 idea is good, so we don't have to track them down.
Exactly.
After the fact.
Okay. And then, um, the last part would be for the, for us to do the selection of the recipients at our second, second week of March, and hopefully, that'll be our second meeting or our first meeting in March. So the second week of March, make the decision.
All right.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so then I get, I guess I'll make a motion for us to, in mid-January, to advise the Islam Meadow Career Center that the scholarships that will be available will be one first-place scholarship for $1,000, and four runner-up scholarships for $500 apiece. Each will have to give a commercial on how to recycle and its benefits. The commercial should be no longer than five minutes long. The last day for submission will be on February, the last day in February at 4:00 PM, and they need to include the W9s.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. Any objection? Hearing none. It passes, so.
All right, great.
So Lorraine, can you let the Islam Meadow Career Center, that would be Mark Mackey, know what we've decided, so he can get that out to high schoolers? Seniors and juniors, yeah?
All right, great. Under New Business, we got a request from the Masonic Temple for a one-day liquor license, beer and wine, on Wednesday, January 20th, 2016, from five-
Chair, your, your 6:15 is here.
Oh, thank you.
Do you still want to go there?
No, we'll come back.
Okay.
Our 6:15 appointment is here, Tom Florence, come on up. We've determined we can't shake hands, because we're too far away.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, how are you? Give me the peace sign or something. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So I'm here for a couple items. The first item is a, a, my new potential-
Yeah.
Retirement benefit for the town.
Right. It's more or less for information, what is it, it's what their deferred comp vendor on Mass Mutual, and they're offering now to cities and towns, which I, I think it's a, it's, it's a good option, is Roth IRA, which is post-tax dollars, so invest in it, and you take it out, you don't have to pay the tax, because-
Oh, nice, yeah.
It's already been subject to tax. So basically, it's just for information, that that is another thing that they're offering for deferred comp, the regular under a 457 plan. However, it does require a payroll change, and our town accountant wanted me, thought best that I come here and just to let you know that it's going to be one more item, that's just going to be broken out.
Yep.
Okay.
But she wants our blessing on it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to propose a motion to accept the amendment, let's see, of the Mass Mutual for their 457B plan, and with the involvement of an option of a Roth IRA.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Did, through the chair?
Mm-hmm.
Did you talk to Sarah about this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Is she in favor or no?
She's in favor, yes. She just thought that it's something I should bring to, and a lot of the other towns, it's through the plain administrator, which is the treasurer, and it doesn't really get to a level like this, but she thought communication wise, to let you guys know that it is going to require a payroll, just, just one additional line into the payroll Roth IRA, that you guys should know about it.
Yeah, well, did it be causing her a lot more work, having?
It's not, no, it's just going to be, you know, Mass Mutual will do most of the-
They will.
-of the work, and they'll maintain, they'll do all the stuff like they do now. It's just, in munis, it's just programming one additional line that, that it's, and I do understand that payroll, there's so many options now, there's a lot of stuff, you know, through so many different departments that go into it, and that this is going to be one more line.
But nowadays, we give people more options to put money away, because there's a lot of people that haven't, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, at least until powerball.
That's a good point, yeah. I just, I just played.
I might, I talked to Sarah a little bit about it, but I didn't have a chance to talk to Tom. She did express some concerns about, and this may have already been taken care of, about Mass Mutual being one company's, you know, offering a benefit to the employees of Islam Meadow, and if whether or not other companies were offered that opportunity to do that, if that was like an RFP that was put out there, I'm not sure. Do you know, Tom, if that was done?
Yeah, we had our, our vendor that we've had for years before Mass Mutual, Great West, I think there's still, some people that are still in that plan. So there is an option there. There was something that did go out, I don't know how long ago it was, and, you know, Mass Mutual.
And then she, when I was asking her questions, and again, because I haven't had a chance to talk to Tom and Sarah together, she was saying there, there could be a possibility where there could be an administrative problem, and again, but-
What kind of administrative problem?
Trying to separate out who's going to be getting certain benefits, and who's not going to be getting the, the benefits, and that, so I, again, I can't speak intelligently about it, because we just spoke-
I think that would just be programmed.
We just spoke about that, I think, this morning, so, but anyway.
I think if it's an option for our employees, we should give it to them, and it doesn't cost us anything.
No, and, you know, there's no cost to this. In fact, I got an email from the representative, saying that all they're doing is adding up, like, one additional payroll line, there not be any new account numbers, it's part of the same 457 plan, so.
Mm-hmm.
And they'll be doing most of the administration.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So Mass Mutual will be doing most of the work as far as the clerical part?
Yeah, as far as, you know, keeping track of everybody where all their funds go, everything, that won't be a change.
Right.
How the money's allocated, it's just one additional piece.
The town's, sorry to interrupt, but I think the town's only part is they withhold the money from the payroll.
Yep.
And then the money, a sum of money gets sent to, to Mass Mutual, and Mass Mutual obviously knows all the people who are involved, and how much they put in, so they, they do all the, they, they do all the, the maintenance of the, of the retirement plans for everybody.
But the town does cut a check, right?
Right.
And we send it to Mass Mutual, right?
Exactly.
Any additional questions?
No, sir.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good, all set?
Thank you for that.
Say to drive safely.
Appreciate it.
Be careful.
Drive safely.
Yeah, we certainly will get geared up for all the elections coming up, so we're getting ready to go.
All right.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
All right, Masonic, we have a request from the Masonic Temple for a one-day liquor license, beer and wine on Wednesday, oh, not Wednesday, January twentieth, two thousand sixteen, from five P M. to ten P M. at the Masonic Temple Hall, forty-three Chestnut Street, in conjunction with a fundraiser. Insurance is on file, I'd like to propose a motion to approve the one-day liquor license. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a request from the Islam Meadow Unicorn Club for a one-day liquor license, beer and wine, on Friday, February fifth, two thousand, two thousand sixteen, from six P M. to ten P M. at St. Luke's Church, four hundred Prospect Street, in conjunction with their portcetta. Propose a motion to approve that liquor license.
Some move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's citations for two Eagle Scouts, Colin O'Shea and Colin Sarard, from Scout Troop one seventy-nine. It's a ceremony to be held on Sunday, January thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, at the John Boyle O'Reilly Club. And I believe Lorraine will usually send a, a letter of recognition, or something to that effect, or... Citations, okay, all right.
Well, through the chair, without going deep, Paul, if I could make that, I'll go there.
Okay, good, great, appreciate it. All right, um, next item is Maya, uh... What's that?
You don't need to vote on that or anything, on sending the citations?
I don't believe so. I believe you have to vote for citations, I think. Next item is for the, for the annual, um, M M A. meeting. Maya, which is our insurance company, there, there's a report, we have a report of the nominated committee, and we have a, we have, there's a voting delegate, which is usually the, the chairman, and actually, I did, I, because the, the deadline was yesterday, I did send it in with my name as the voting delegate, and if you, you can be the alternate if you like, because I guess they want an alternate, so... It's not, it's not as exciting as it sounds. But it is, it is necessary, so... Next item, our town reports. And I know, I think, Greg, you've been working on, or at least dealing with the department heads and...
Right, the department hasn't been sending in the town reports, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna sit with Lorraine, and we figured on next week, I believe, and, uh, sort through them and try to get, you know, because this is one of those things, and I know you're new, so this is not to put pressure on anybody, Nick sort of was the, was the creator of this,
Right.
With our input, but, uh, obviously this year, we'll, it'll be group effort, so...
Right, so we have some samples from previous years, and we'll, um, we'll, we'll come up with a, uh, structure for the selectmen, and, yeah.
Great. Okay, this one is Board of Selectmen's meeting, Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, question mark. And that's two weeks from today, I guess, I don't know if the board has an issue with that, if everybody's gonna be around, but I don't think we, I, I don't, this time of year, I don't know if we should go three weeks, so if we can get it to the twenty-sixth, then I think that would be probably better than, uh, wait until, whatever the next one will be, February third, or... But I'll leave it up, I'll ask the board if they've got any opinions. If they ever have a problem with the twenty-sixth. Okay with the twenty-sixth? All right. All right, then we'll have our next meeting on the twenty-sixth of January.
You know, with that being said, Paul...
No, it's a Tu, it's a Tuesday.
Can we commit to either a second and a fourth, or a first and a third for Tuesdays?
Well, I know it's every other week, so we've got, in theory, I know we've been off that schedule because of budgets and whatnot, um...
It's gonna be the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-sixth. Yeah, um, we've been going on every other week's schedule, so hopefully we can get back on that. I know some are floating around as our schedule for this year, so after, maybe we can bring that up next meeting and...
We never did, did it for the year, we did it for a few months, but, um...
I think we've got it printed through, all right, well, okay, we'll, we'll see what we've got and go from there.
Well, this is the twelfth, the next one's the twenty-sixth, the next one after that would be the ninth, that'd be two weeks from the twenty-sixth, and then the...
So why does it have to be every two weeks, as opposed to twice a month?
Well, that's just the way we've done it forever, so you get two extra meetings, and then obviously in the year.
And, uh, Lorraine has a comment there.
We have a hearing on the first week of February, liquor license.
The first week?
That's the first, I think it's the...
Second?
The second.
On the second.
That's on the second.
Oh, okay.
Also, I think the ca, the cable, uh, license, uh...
Yeah, that's coming up, that's, that's gonna be done.
The second has to be done by the second also.
So maybe what we should do, well, let me ask the board, do we want to go up to the second instead of going to the twenty-sixth?
It don't matter to me, whatever.
Yeah, or do we want to go?
I think we might have to do both.
All right, then after, what we'll do is we'll do the twenty-sixth, and then we'll go to the second, but then after that, we're gonna try to get on the schedule of every two weeks.
So we'll go to February second?
Yeah, and then we'll go for the night, uh, sixteenth and March...
March first.
Yeah. No, we don't want to go there, that's my birthday.
Okay. Oh, there's also, there's, there's five Tues, there's five Tuesdays in March also.
Is there?
Yeah.
All right. What's that?
The sixth and the second.
No, we're going to the second, the second of February, February two, and then this, and then the sixteenth. All right, now we've got Health Department, Board of Health.
Uh, Board of Health, old business, we have not new business. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the application for a seepage handler's permit from Wind River Environmental, five, seven, seven Main Street, Suite one-ten Hudson, Mass, owner John O'Connell.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
What, uh, what is a seepage handle?
It's actually seppage handle, they, they, uh...
Handler, oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, the fine folks who come up to your house with a big truck with the hose.
Gotcha.
Any discussion?
Maybe, and you don't want to be upset.
I'm done now. That did it for me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passed. Health agent, Amy, could you come up there?
All right, Amy.
Okay, what we're doing is we, um, Amy and I have been working on this, is Amy the...
She wants to start with the permits.
Can we start with the permits?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, so what I, Billy, I think you saw these quickly, but I put in your packet, sorry for it being so late, was a rough draft to, uh, streamline our application and permitting process. Currently, the way we're doing it is we're sending out one to six pages of applications, plus one to six individual licenses to each of our restaurants or food service establishments. It seems like if we streamline them, which is the draft you have in front of you, for both the application process and the permitting, that we'd be able to save a lot of money in printing, postage, time, and, uh, paper. Uh, so are there any, I was wondering if there's any feedback or oppositions to moving forward permitting this way in February?
I think, oh, I'm sorry, no, I was, I was gonna say, I think this is a good idea, because I've even had people talking about, like, liquor licenses, entertainment licenses, you know, things like that, where if you can combine some of that, instead of coming back three, four times to Town Hall, you get everything like one-stop shopping, so I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I agree, I think it's a great idea, to streamline some of that, and, and save a tree.
Excellent, great, so I'll move forward with that, another February process.
Up in the right-hand corners where the fee will be drawn, and there'll be marked off later.
Okay.
So can you put the fee next to each item?
Well, that's on the, um, application process.
Okay, but I...
So on the, so on the application, right next to what it is, it gives the total.
I saw that.
Right.
And then here will be the total, so what they paid.
Oh, just the total.
This is what, basically, it can hang in, it will hang in there.
Right, so they're required, they're required to hang it.
And so they'll have all the permits, so they'll just have this.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, great. So the other thing, Billy, if you want, go ahead.
Yeah, the next thing we got, uh, present, a presentation on, uh, we want to create a health department. We're gonna, we're gonna incorporate, um, the dog officer, who else?
Dog officer, emergency preparedness, nursing.
Yep.
And potentially the M R C coordinator, and me.
So we got some kind of control over everybody, uh, they'll have their own line item on the budget, and...
So, yeah, what I, what I was gonna propose to the, to the board is, I, I know I've been here just a, a short time, but in that time, I've kind of identified an area that we can kind of streamline things for the department to, uh, bring some more accountability and, uh, cooperation between the different, uh, employees that we have. So I propose to the board that, um, multiple of the positions that you guys are currently direct, have direct oversight for, be combined into a health department. Uh, this would be a, a move toward a more traditional type of public health in communities, uh, around the state. This change would basically mean that there would be a health department, uh, which would be responsible for the day-to-day operations and enforcement, code enforcement, and then the health board would move for, would be more for policy, direction, and oversight of the director.
And the people that'd be under, that'd be public health nurse, animal control officer, and M R C, emergency preparedness, director positions under a combined health department with a health director. Yeah, we'd be able, able to have more control on what's going on, you know?
Okay.
And also give one point contact, if people, uh, have to go out sick or vacation, or if they have, um, uh, comp time or whatever, they'd have one person to then send it to the town administrator.
And if I make through the chair, as noted here, because all these positions that are, that you noted, report to the Board of Selectmen, and the creation of this department would not have to go to town meeting, it's like they would get outside of town meetings, so...
And just, uh, to reiterate kind of what Billy said, is that the twenties, in speaking with Sarah, the twen, uh, fiscal year sixteen monies would stay separate and stay within the parameter that the town has already voted on. The fiscal year seventeen monies would be consolidated under, uh, one department, but no monies would be changed, and everyone would retain the full amount of their budget that they provided to you.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right.
Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, that the board vote to combine the health agent, public health nurse, animal control officer, M R C., and emergency preparedness director positions under a combined health department with a health director.
Some move.
Now, second?
There's, uh, any further discussion?
Just making sure, just also to add that there would be no increase in, in cost, that all the, um, the budget items would stay, remain the same.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose? Motion passed?
Great.
Thank you.
Continue the good, continue the good work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Oh, Amy, also, on the, I'm sorry, just as you were leaving, the second document, can, can we get our town seal on that, though, also?
Sure.
I think that would be good.
Get a what on there, then?
A town seal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Or something that says the town of Islam Meadow.
Yep.
Sure. Okay. You'll do. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, may I just do meetings and vacations and reminders?
Um, Board of Selectmen meeting, uh, well, we're gonna have it on, not only on February second, but also on January twenty-sixth, I believe it is, at the, will that also be at the Town Hall? The twenty-sixth is, to the, to the twenty-sixth will be announced.
Twenty-sixth will be consolidated?
The location to be determined. The second is definitely gonna be at the Town Hall hearing room, located at sixty Center Square. Invitations to the Western Mass Fire Chiefs Association Legislative Breakfast on Friday, March fourth, at eight-thirty A M. at the Log Cabin, um, in Holyoke, R S V P. to the fire chief. Also, um, M L K. Day is coming up, too.
No, Town Hall's closed, I believe, right?
I'm not sure.
Town Hall closing on Martin Luther King Day? Yeah.
So that will be...
It'll be Monday, the eighteenth.
So Monday, the eighteenth, Town Hall will be closed for Martin Luther King Day.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Town Council. You didn't think if we'd gotten to this quickly, did you?
We've gotten, we're not shaking hands, because we're too far away.
How are you, sir?
I thought we would put these tables in a long time ago, so we wouldn't have to do that.
Oh...
Aren't you friendly?
Jeez.
Happy New Year to you, anyways. Item eighteen, I believe, is not executive, that's just, that's just the notification.
Nineteen and twenty would, and twenty-one would not be.
Okay. All right, so why don't we go to, um, well, then we'll go to twenty-one before we go to executive.
I have no information on that, other than the fact that, uh, we need the, the administrator, or the administrator, and perhaps I, depending if he needs my, if he wants my assistance, we'll prepare notices, um, to go to...
So in your, in your packet there, there's a, um, a draft, uh, notice, uh, that would go in the advertisement for the, uh...
Oh, okay, so someone would review.
Right, and then there's also a, uh, a draft, a description of the position, and again, that's draft, so any, any, um, updates that you'd like to put in that, we can, the next, we'll put it on the agenda, and we can discuss that, too.
Okay, all right.
So then you're willing to possibly, February?
Uh, actually, January twenty-sixth, we can, uh, if you would like, we can put the advertisement, um, out, and then, uh, the actual description of the position doesn't have to be ready at that time.
Okay, great, so we'll review that and get back next meeting.
Right.
Thanks.
And, uh, and through the chair, um, something was brought to me this morning, I, I didn't mention, is that the I R S. has changed its mileage reimbursement, and, uh, so January this year, they do it once a year.
Right, they dropped it.
They dropped it to fifty-four cents, uh, they, from fifty-seven and a half cents, we were at fifty-five and a half cents, so we never went up when the I R S. went up. Sarah, the town accountant, has recommended that we vote to adopt the I R S., so every January, when they change it, we, we change it at the same time, too, so we don't have to revote it every year, if that's, uh...
Okay, and also, and also, not to be a stickler, because I'm sure it's mere dollars, but in theory, if we're paying them fifty-five and a half cents, and the I R S. is paying fifty-four, that extra cent and a half is income, so, don't, don't let the government get away with all their, their income there.
That's right, as a matter of fact, that's why Sarah wants to do it, because we have to actually separa, separate that penny out as income,
Right.
Uh, which is a accounting nightmare, so...
So, Ellie?
Well, what she was doing, what was she, um, not so quick to phone her, what she was doing before, because we were at fifty...
We were under, so it wasn't income.
Okay, so, say that to me again, what it was, you said it was fifty-seven.
We were, we were paying...
The I R S. was fifty-seven and a half.
Oh, the I R S. was fifty-seven, okay.
Fifty-five and a half.
We were paying fifty-five and a half.
Fifty-five and a, okay, got it.
And the I R S. has changed it to fifty-four.
Okay.
So if we change it to fifty-four retroactive to January first, then that would, um, then, uh, keep us from having to send out separate income.
Right.
Not that that matters, but...
I'd like to propose a motion to adopt the I, the two thousand sixteen I R S., um, legislation at fifty-four cents a mile, and in future years, to adopt any changes that the I R S. puts forth as far as their mileage, um, as far as their mileage payments, based on what the, what it is on January, usually on January first of the year, because usually they have it set by then, Sarah. Is there a second?
A second for discussion. What happens if the I R S. decides to go way up high? That means if we vote this in, it's automatically gonna go up high, I, I think we, because we should still keep that, that, that possibility of being lower like we have in the past, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but, I mean, they usually, what they do is they may drag behind a year, or half a year, or whatever, but they usually base it on gas prices, and, and, you know, so... Uh, unless we have a real big spike in the gas prices, um, I mean, I don't think they, the fifty-seven, fifty-eight that they've had the last couple of years is the most I've ever seen in my far-too-long-going taxes.
Can we vote it year to year?
That's what we used to do in the phone campaign, and we, we went forward into the I R S., but it's never been...
So you don't think it'll ever have a spike where it goes up, where it's gonna hurt us, but, I don't know.